Okay, well, we're gonna continue our item number two, which is a discussion regarding affordable housing opportunities. We have staff here to talk about this item.
Gerald's gonna pick this up.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Gerald.
We are ready to go on item number two. Discussion regarding affordable housing opportunities.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Council. During Council's Goals and Objectives session, this most recent outing, Council identified some potential uses for ARPA dollars in kind of broad-brush categories. One of those categories was an investment in affordable housing. And as our process leads us down this path, it starts out as one of Council's goals and objectives, and then it makes its way to a council committee or a study session or a pre-council conference in concept to see if what staff sees as an opportunity to execute your goal is what you're looking for. And as it comes to Council's investment of ARPA dollars for affordable housing, we have such an opportunity. This opportunity started with a conversation a few months ago. I had a conversation with Mr. Gene McCowen, who shared with me his vision that before his 80th birthday, his goal was to put a roof over every person's head in Norman. And I just tucked that away and thanked Gene for that, for sharing that information with me. And then low and behold, a series of opportunities present themselves, and that statement of a desire from Mr. McCowen's perspective may be available to us. I contacted Mr. McCowen and said, "Remember that conversation we had about putting a roof over every person's head in Norman? I have an idea about a potential location for a multifamily project that Council might consider investing in with its ARPA dollars." Met with Mr. McCowen in his office. We walked through the conversation, and he said, "I love where you're going with this, but I think I have a better location." And he grabbed Richard McCowen, and we sat down at the table and walked through an opportunity to develop a multifamily affordable project in Norman on property that is currently owned by the State of Oklahoma Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse. And I thought it made brilliant sense. Fortunately for us, Richard McCowen has quite the portfolio of products that have been built by their entity. And when we tasked Richard with coming up with a concept of an affordable project, what came out of his mind and into his laptop, I think, was definitely worth showing to Council. And if Council considers this presentation a worthwhile pursuit, what will do is start taking additional steps to bring this idea to fruition. I'd like to introduce Mr. Richard McCowen. And I think it's all set up. Bryce, if we're all loaded and ready to go, should be able to advance with the files.
Okay. Hi, glad to be here. Can you hear me okay? I kinda wanna take my mask off to talk, if that's alright. I just somehow would feel, 'cause I kinda like to smile when I talk, anyway. Alright, so if I hit that button, okay. I'm gonna give you just a little bit of background on the product I'm gonna show you today. We had been invited to take a look at a tract of land in Edmund, near the Spring Creek Shopping Center and near Edmund's Hafer Park. You may have read about this in the newspaper. Edmund ended up buying the project out, and so it didn't get built. But it was based on some work, one of our local architects, Sam Day, who's been really involved in the Wheeler District. Sam, longtime friend of mine, and he had created this really cool throwback multifamily idea and built it in the Plaza District, right there on 16th Street, very close to Black Welder, right as, just east of the Commercial District, the Plaza in Oklahoma City. And Sam built this beautiful little four-unit house. And when you drive by it, it looks like a single-family house. And as you start to unpack this thing, it's got one front door facing the street, and then it's got these little, you know, porch, and then two other front doors that are kind of on the cheeks of the porch, and then another one around the corner. So you end up with, really, it's four front doors, and I'll show you a set of floor plans here to flesh this out. So we took Sam's idea and we ran with it. And we, his were all one-bedroom, and then we needed for this Edmund idea that's on the screen to blow it up into a combination of one-bedrooms and two-bedrooms. And so we developed several different elevation ideas, different ways. Of course, this was gonna be a high-end luxury product with lots of covered parking and private garages and things of that nature. Adjacent, in fact, I'm gonna go back to that slide. You can see at the lower portion are these, you know, garages off to the side. But these buildings are simple, old-school buildings and don't have attached garages. And that's one of the things that helps with their cost. The way they were gonna get built in Edmund, we were gonna spend a ton of money on fancy flooring and appliances. It was really interesting, luxury product. But the fundamental bones of it, you're building a nice, elegant, old-school house with four-sided architecture, windows on all four sides, but it's still a simple box. I mean, and that's what gives it its elegance and its symmetry. So it made a nice street scene. That's the exact same house plan. It's just, there's a two-bedroom version, a one-bedroom version. And of course, when you have a simple box like that, you can change the elevation in the roofs to end up creating a real neighborhood feel. And I think that's something very critical in affordable housing. We end up with the pattern, you know, of older projects or projects that don't age well over time. They just pick a plan and they repeat it 20 times. And you feel like you're at a military barrack. This would be so simple, and will be so simple, to make slight modifications, some with porches, some with, we'll come up with fun, affordable architectural details to really make it feel like a neighborhood. So we're in love with this idea, Mansion Block product. HUD issued some guidelines about 12 months ago, and they said, "We wanna only finance six-unit or more." There's been lots of these sort of subdivision, single-family subdivisions turned into apartment complexes, and coming back through the HUD process and doing 35-year refinance-type things. So it has, "We want density, we want real multifamily. You can't have more than 50% of your buildings that are, you know, four units or less." Excuse me. So with that in mind, we started working on the plans on your screen here, which are six units. You've got two down, I'm sorry, three units down, three units up. You can see in the upper-left, those are one-bedroom model. You know, each one of those floor plans is identical. What, you know, you take the stairs and go up, you've got a one-bed and, you know, big, open kitchen. Or, you know, you step into the porch and you go to the left and you're in the downstairs unit. And what's super-interesting about this is, from a construction standpoint, everything's just built out of wood. And this is not well-known in the public. There's the incorrect assumption that when we do a multifamily building, that we create efficiency. You know, people have it in their mind that it's like manufacturing. If you build a 24-unit building, that that's more efficient somehow than building a duplex or a single-family home. The opposite is true. When you build a 24-unit home, you've now introduced things like common-area stairs that are made out of steel and concrete, and you have to introduce welders, and they get paid a different pay scale than carpenters and so on. And then you've got the cost of maintaining that. Who's gonna sweep the common area? Who's gonna come, you know, clean that and make it all work? You've got waterproofing issues to keep that common area where it is sealed off from blowing in, you know, through the wall assembly and so on. Buildings, as they get more dense, actually go up in price per square foot. And they go up in price per square foot significantly. Density equals higher cost, and that is the opposite of what the public thinks. So with this product, we're trying to keep it simple, where the trade contractors actually building it are the same guys that are building single-family houses. It's a two-story product, looks like houses, it's carpentry. So we haven't introduced complex welding. We don't have, you know, balconies. We don't have strange waterproofing on the second story. We think this could be built really efficiently. In the luxury end of the market, you never see two-bed, one-bath. Like, nobody builds that anymore. So here, trying to keep things more affordable, we've got a two-bed, one-bath option. We've also can do a two-bed, two-bath option. And then we've also worked up a three-bed, two-bath option. So more of the family-type rental. And again, that is a product that isn't being built. I don't, I haven't seen a three-bedroom apartment built new now in 10 years. I mean, it's just kind of where the rental market is. So lots of market research is gonna be needed to get this product right. But the idea here is to build something that can be done in incremental stages, you know, as we need and as the demand is fleshed out. The other neat thing about it, if you build it incrementally, is you learn your lessons. You can build two or three buildings. You go in, you say, "This is working, this isn't working. Here's how we can make these better." Make some adjustments, and we keep going. When you build a big 300-unit apartment complex all at once, you make the same mistake 300 times. I mean, and, you know, there's no redo. So I think this has a lot of potential. What's on the screen here, this is, I know, I've seen Tom McHale in here with the red pointer. I'm gonna try and just talk you through what's on the screen. So Reed Street is over on the left side. Everything there in pink, you can see Food and Shelter's facility kind of shining through in the aerial photo. The light turquoise, that's floodplain slash WQPZ zone. And that probably has some flexibility. We'll kind of need to have some thoughts and explore what we can do with that. There's not a tremendous amount of drainage coming through this area, and we probably can reshape it and really provide some regional detention to alleviate some downstream flooding as a bonus out of this. So what we were thinking about is some expansion of the tiny homes for Food and Shelter. And you can also see the future home of the food pantry, for lack of another term. I know it has a name, but you know what I'm talking about. But there's some room for some additional tiny homes on the far-south end of that pink zone over to the left. And then if we build a road, basically, across the north side of Food and Shelter from Reed, and then another road down here at the end of Reed coming in from the south, and I think we would need to coordinate with the state on this remaining land. Either we have another, you know, exit that comes and goes down to Alameda or a road that goes out to 12th Avenue. And that's, that needs to be coordinated to facilitate future commercial development or office or medical, whatever needs to happen over there. But what's on the screen? There are like 320 of these Mansion Block home houses, housing units that can be built there. And then the other thing that we created, and you should be able to see it, the difference between these two slides. Whoops, alright, last slide.
Richard, I think you can use your mouse.
That's the, I forget how many square feet. It's big, I wanna say about 10,000 square feet. A zero-barrier shelter. And that was one of the things, Councilmember Studley, Councilmember Hall, we were talking about in another conversation, is that the need for a zero-barrier shelter. I've had the pleasure of touring the one in Oklahoma City through our bid board, and it's amazing. I really hope that as part of this, you guys are able to go up and visit that facility. This is a first draft, you know, so it's like Legos. Everything can be moved around and changed until we get it shaped into a really great spot. Last thing I wanna share with you, you know, we're working with Mason Joseph Company, they're a HUD mortgage finance lender. And Luke Harry runs their Oklahoma City office. I talked to Luke last week about this project, and he said, "This isn't my area of expertise." And he used to be the director of the HUD Fort Worth office. He said, "There's two guys down there in the HUD Fort Worth office that this is their love language. They understand this, they know it inside and out." He said, "Let me put you with those guys and figure out all of the financing mechanisms." And he said, "This is great, you know, just tell me when you're ready to go." So if you wanna go on a field trip to Fort Worth, I know I can, like, grab Dad, and we're, you know, I'm all in. Whatever you need, happy to do it.
And the beauty of what we're seeing, we recognized that in a conversation with several of us on the phone this morning with Mr. Duran Crosby of State Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse. And we talked about literally the availability of property on Griffin. And there's Jane, 60-some-odd acres south of Main Street, and about 160 acres north of Main Street. And of course, Main Street's right at the top of the picture. There are multiple opportunities where exactly on Griffin property this can happen. The state is warm to the idea of selling off everything that's not currently utilized by the state, and they've got a lot of vacant land up there. They're emailing me appraisals on all of it. We did have conversation about, at the end of the day, who needs to own such a project? And really, this is kind of one of those deals where nobody is insisting that they have to own it. We have been in conversation with the Norman Housing Authority, and they said they would be very interested in being the property manager for such a project. And of course, they understand Section 8 housing as well as anybody in Norman. When we have property owners or project proponents, not interested in taking the credit, but interested in solving a problem, that have a great rolodex with horsepower we need from HUD to help get low-interest financing, Council's ARPA dollars can be used to help buy down the cost and make the units more affordable. Potentially, it's an asset that could live on the balance sheet of the Norman Housing Authority. City of Norman doesn't need to own it, we won't be operating it. We just, I mean, I got, you know, staff of one, and that's a full-time job. The Housing Authority would actually staff up to operate such a project. So there's a whole bunch of malleability to what we see. Conceptually, the units as they're built, I haven't seen a multifamily project like that that feels like home. It doesn't feel like an apartment complex at all. And the concept of, "How do you make something beautiful affordable?" It's kind of built in to what we see here. So we'll do all we could to answer questions. But conceptually, what we're interested in finding out is, Council, are we on the right track to helping achieve your goal of investing in affordable housing in Norman, Oklahoma?
I appreciate, appreciate you, Richard, for coming out and talking to us about this. I've seen your product in real life, and I know you do good work. And this, for me, anyway, definitely something I've wanted to see. And I like this style of it, the block style, where it kind of, not everybody's all just on their own, that's, you know, kind of helps build a community, having the grid-patterned street. Which also fits in, I don't know that this specific type of project was talked about in our master plan that we did with the Griffin property a few years ago with the state, you know, you, I think, I don't know.
ULI.
Yeah, yes, yeah. But they had talked about if this area was redeveloped, that residential neighborhood on grid-patterned streets, and, you know, things like this, I think, fit in with the intent of that plan. So, and with this specific property, I mean, I don't know what else it could be used for. It's not on a main street, it's behind stuff that's already been developed on the main road. And you have the kind of Greenway floodplain area right there, too, so. And all these services that are already, that's been the big draw for me with Food and Shelter. And a big reason why I originally supported the Food and Shelter project was that all these other social services were already located in this area. And many of them had been in this area for a very, longer than I've been alive, for sure. And in the case of Griffin, as long as the whole city's been here. So it seems very appropriate for the area, and I definitely like the look and design of the whole thing, at least conceptual, anyway. So other, I don't have a, Councilmember Studley?
So, Richard, thank you very much for your presentation. I am a huge fan of this, I love it. The only thing that I am concerned about is getting the land from the state. I know when initially this conversation took place, just kind of a preamble, it was the county, I believe, was gonna acquire the land from the state. And then Richard's dad was going to acquire it from the county to build on this. I just wanna get some clarification, because that's the only thing that doesn't sit well with me before I say, "Yeah, let's give you $5 million." Do we know for sure that this land is?
The land is for sale. The county does have interest in the piece south of Main Street, because county health operates off of 12th. There's, you know, also the 160 acres just to the north of this that doesn't really have a lead entity seeking to acquire. But we do know the property is for sale. Obviously, we don't wanna do things that would be in conflict with what the county has planned. And we don't know all the county has planned, but any investment they make in county health is good for the same population. So the opportunity to work with them cooperatively and say, "Hey, can this fit here? Do we need to move this right just to the north of what we look at right here on paper?" We're happy to have those conversations. Obviously, Council has not appropriated those dollars. There's not a check that could be written. And every one of those steps would come back before you for your approval, before a single dollar was spent. But you'd see it all in the plan. We'd have to go through plating and some zoning once the property was acquired. Doesn't need to be acquired by us, but it could be acquired by us. But we could participate with developers. This is really a blank canvas and an opportunity to make sure it looks like what you need it to look like before you authorize a check.
So you're saying that the county is bidding on this? So is, are they, can it be broken up in parcels? Or is this entire plot from 12th through the little, I don't know, is that Bishop's Creek right there?
Yes.
So from 12th to Bishop's Creek, is that the whole plot that is for sale by the state? Or can we split it up and say, "The county's gonna purchase this piece, and the city's gonna purchase this piece?"
Well, as it exists today, it is, everything south of Main Street is one parcel. It does not have a plat on it, so it's just a big blob on a map. The conversation about who needs to utilize what and who will pay what for what can all be negotiated and settled in the plat, a lot like what we're doing with the hospital on the Porter Campus. So we had it all worked out, what was gonna happen, and that plat will be becoming before you in February on the Porter Campus, Jane? Yep. So we would follow a procedure, a lot like that, that you participate in the conversation every step. Everybody agrees on the final map, and then we could assign dollars to square footages. And if it doesn't fit here at the end of the day, but it fits just to the north of Food and Shelter, that may be a great location, too.
That was my next question. So if this land does not, if we just don't get dibs on it, then basically, we can look to the north of Main Street. But my other part to this is, I've lived in Norman a long time, and I feel like I've heard that this land has been up for grabs for years and years and years and years and years. So what makes this year any different?
Well, you know, timing is everything. We are at a point where I think all of the decision-makers at the state level are aligned in what they see happening. And what we recognize is the state intends to build two brand-new hospital facilities, one in Norman and one in Tulsa. And prior to ARPA dollars becoming available, the state's budget was kind of dictated by, "You're gonna have to sell all this real estate and make enough money to build this brand-new 250-bed hospital, which has a big price tag to it, or it can't happen." With the availability of ARPA dollars, according to folks at the state, it sounds like the governor recognizes the need to invest in these two new hospital facilities. Land sales will have to make up a delta. I was told that the delta on the project in Tulsa was about $16 million, which is absolutely achievable if you're selling, you know, 160 acres there and 60 to 80 acres down here, plus other property they own around the metro area. So they have a couple of pieces of property that the state currently owns in mind. They have architects and engineers working on concepts for new hospitals. And we were told today by the COO of the State Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse, it's for sale, here's the appraisal. And let us know how you guys would like to proceed if you're interested.
Okay, so we've got a pretty good deadline, then, of where it looks like there's an end of the road where we're actually gonna buy it versus this is still just a talk?
Yes, no, I think they're beyond the talking stage, and they are willing to entertain offers to make something wonderful happen.
Okay, and the only other part to this that I just wanna state is, I think this is wonderful for the long term, but we still need to find something in the interim to figure out a short-term solution. And I just wanna go on record saying, we hear you, business owners that are off of Main. We understand the issues that you guys are going through, and we are looking for a short-term solution. I know this is not it, but we definitely have some other options that I'm excited to talk to Mr. Pyle about, that I found out he went and saw some other property, so.
So happy you happened to mention it, Councilmember Studley. Part of our conversation this morning with Mr. Duran Crosby was their willingness to allow us to go and inspect vacant buildings on the current Griffin footprint. And he said, "We've got three properties. We'd like you to bring your chief building official with you and come and inspect to see how habitable they really are for your purpose." And he said, "I want you to recognize one thing. The population that we see coming to your shelter, they are our population. We're very comfortable with that population moving over to Griffin." We have treatment for lots of... Well, you know, timing is everything. We are at a point where I think all of the decision-makers at the state level are aligned in what they see happening. And what we recognize is the state intends to build two brand-new hospital facilities, one in Norman and one in Tulsa. And prior to ARPA dollars becoming available, the state's budget was kind of dictated by, "You're going to have to sell all this real estate and make enough money to build this brand-new 250-bed hospital, which has a big price tag to it, or it can't happen." With the availability of ARPA dollars, according to folks at the state, it sounds like the governor recognizes the need to invest in these two new hospital facilities. Land sales will have to make up a delta. I was told that the delta on the project in Tulsa was about $16 million, which is absolutely achievable if you're selling, you know, 160 acres there and 60 to 80 acres down here, plus other property they own around the metro area. So, they have a couple of pieces of property that the state currently owns in mind. They have architects and engineers working on concepts for new hospitals. And we were told today by the COO of the State Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse, "It's for sale. Here's the appraisal." And let us know how you guys would like to proceed if you're interested.
Okay. So, we've got a pretty good deadline then of where it looks like there's an end of the road where we're actually going to buy it versus this is still just a talk?
Yes. No, I think they're, they're beyond the talking stage and they are willing to entertain offers to make something wonderful happen.
Okay. And the only other part to this that I just want to state is, I think this is wonderful for the long-term, but we still need to find something in the interim to figure out a short-term solution. And I just want to go on record saying, "We hear you, business owners that are off of Main. We understand the issues that you guys are going through and we are looking for a short-term solution." I know this is not it, but we definitely have some other options that I'm excited to talk to Mr. Pyle about, that I found out he went and saw some other property, so...
So, so happy you happened to mention it, Councilmember Studley. Part of our conversation this morning with Mr. Duran Crosby was their willingness to allow us to go and inspect vacant buildings on the current Griffin footprint. And he said, "We've got three properties. We'd like you to bring your chief building official with you and come and inspect to see how habitable they really are for your purpose." And he said, "I want you to recognize one thing. The population that we see coming to your shelter, they are our population. We're very comfortable with that population moving over to Griffin. We, we, we have treatment for lots of our homeless population currently in Norman. And we saw absolutely zero hesitation with the opportunity for them to host in the near term, as long as we can find some suitable sites in the three buildings they identified on the map." So, we're working with their building superintendent to get the keys, to coordinate with our chief building official, and we'll be making entrance and seeing what we can find to make something happen in the near term. We also have investigated initially a piece of property that we think may support a product called a single-room occupancy that could be made available in the near term. So, because the council established a goal to invest in affordable housing, staff has been on the hunt. And I'm, we, we've just never seen an opportunity to invest in affordable housing like we have right before us and now. So, staff's excited. Hopefully, you're excited. And we have local partners who have the skills and the abilities and the enthusiasm to make this happen. This, this is a rare moment for us.
Yep. And I, I'm excited because when we talked last, it was only one building on Griffin. So, now you have three potential buildings, so yay. And thank you, Richard, again. I really appreciate this presentation.
Councilmember Holt?
So, I hardly even know where to start. I'm so beside myself. Thank you, Richard, for bringing this to us. I was fortunate enough to have a little sneak peek a few weeks ago. And part of the reason why, I've spoken many times about all of the puzzle pieces that we try to put together, and this could not be more true of Ward 4, in which this is located, of so many different projects that are potentially being able to be created, and they all impact one another. And so, in the time that I've been on the city council, the need, the acute need for affordable housing only becomes more and more clear to us. I started learning about this as a resident on the Community Block Grant Policy Committee. And it has been reinforced with the investment we made with Homebase. And one of their recommendations is, and identifying a gap in service to serve our homeless population and, and others, is the lack of affordable housing options. So, to your point, Councilmember Studley, I have been following what has been going on with the Griffin complex. And I agree with you, it feels like we've been at a stalemate for so many years. But honestly, one of the unintended consequence of the pandemic that we've been living through is the intersection we find ourselves now with so many things where we've been stuck that we are realizing with, you know, really one-time opportunities to be really careful about how we invest in our community. And the fact that the rules of the game have changed as far as what the Department of Mental Health can and can't do, and that we've been steadily talking about this and trying to solve these problems, and all of a sudden, this is where we find ourselves. We find ourselves with, you know, the McCowen family who has already invested in housing that I think the community understands is really valuable in the tiny house model at the McCowen Village. That's a demonstrated product that you all have already invested in. You know, we're familiar with the work that, that you and your family do and your commitment to the community. And so, to have that partnership in place also and to recognize the need that we have and how important it is, as you said so eloquently, to create a neighborhood and to create a community. And that this is a place that still has a lot of open space. The community, the Central Oklahoma Mental Health Center is right there. We have so many community services that work hard every day to help people improve where they are in their life right now. So, I am so supportive of continuing the investigation of this. I'm one of the people that was really adamant about how we have to get affordable housing in that conversation elevated, and we have to start finding solutions. And the fact that we're here now is, it's just great. I don't know how else to say it. So, definitely committed to the kind of bookmark we have on what we've tentatively allocated for affordable housing. I'm so pleased that you all have come forward with an idea. And again, you know, my concern would be normally is, oh my gosh, we've been talking about getting this land, getting an opportunity to, to have access to all this property. But I feel really confident that we're there. I mean, we're getting there. It's just a matter of conversations and partnerships and, you know, how we move forward. And there's been more movement on this in the past year than there has been in the last 15 years, I feel like. So, definitely interested in moving forward. My only concern, and you brought it up, we have Bishop Creek running right through there. It's part of our watershed. I am sure it's part of the water quality protection zone. So, I think we have to be really intentional about the impact that we have there and to do everything we can to protect our watershed while we're, you know, pursuing these other things. And, you know, just, you mentioned the roadwork and, you know, this is looking like a kind of historical grid pattern. And so, I'm really excited to see where the next step takes us, and I'm fully supportive of making a move in this direction. And you got me at old school.
We've got about 15 minutes left, just so everybody knows. Councilmember Foreman is next.
I'm always really quick. I just want to thank you for the really thoughtful design on this. I know that a lot of people have concerns. They think they're just going to see a bunch of eyesores or, you know, tract homes. And I think we're all kind of tired of that. So, I really appreciate that. I liked when you said the bonus with the, like, detention and taking into consideration our watershed, that is something that council weighs very heavily when we vote on projects like this. So, I really hope that we can see something like this come to fruition. Just out of curiosity, ballpark figure, best college try, how much would, like, a rent cost on these properties? Do you, do you know? The, like, the affordability, like, what? Maybe no.
What we are going to need to do is figure out how to design to a budget.
Sure.
That's really kind of what, where we always, you know, start with these things. I think it's going to be a struggle to try and figure out how to, you know, bring them in on an average cost of anywhere below $125,000 a unit, you know, all-inclusive with land and everything. So, it, I, I, you know, I think we, we just, it's a massive pro forma equation that we all start putting together and, and have everyone do their inputs. What, how much rent can people afford? And then we just keep squeezing it to make it fit all of federal guidelines, as well as building code and so on and so forth. And then you end up where you are and like, "Well, we can't go any lower." And we also have some aesthetic ambitions, which could be done pretty affordably, actually. I wish I, I could answer.
Right. I understand. No, we have some affordable housing that's still like $850 a month rent. And, you know, my mortgage is like 900. So, you know, we, we would really want, I know council, I'm sure, would want to see that in consideration, to be reasonable with the design in this, too.
And then, of course, those Section 8 vouchers to
Right.
Substitute as cash. And, and it does boil down to developers and financiers who understand the value of that Section 8 housing voucher and how that feeds into the equation.
Well, I'm really excited to see this. I hope we can do it. Thank you.
Happy to be working on this. If I could, and I, I put it back to this image, realizing we're being broadcast, so as we're talking about, this is probably more useful to look at than, than the other ones. But with the work that we've done over the last 20 years on stormwater cleansing, the work with Dr. Kaufman, Dr. Naren, there are so many opportunities. Right now, this creek is just running, right? There's no, you know, any, anything that falls in that creek, whether it's a, you know, a plastic bottle from the Walmart parking lot, it's just flushing on down, headed to the river. If we can go in and actually create a series of dams and create constructed wetlands, even better, constructed, you know, actual retention, detention ponds, where you've got the opportunity for the surface water to precipitate out phosphorus, it's one of the best ways to remove it from the watershed, is to let it precipitate down and just rest at the bottom of the, of a detention pond. Even better, you start growing, you know, large, tall, cattail-like things and other aquatic plants around the edges. You don't mow all the way down to the edges. Those are really great for taking up a lot of excess nitrogen and reducing the algae bloom on a pond. It's so easy to leverage the knowledge we've gained over the last 20 years in terms of stormwater quality improvement. And there's enough land here to really do something with that, not only to provide flood control for the downstream neighbors, because this whole part of town has no flood control. It was all developed before we had a detention ordinance. And then, we probably, if we designed it right, could create some off-site detention that would facilitate future development north of Main Street. There needs to be some detention up there as well. But if it were really a great coordinated effort, we could end up at the beginning of a real master plan that's taking into consideration those stormwater issues over the next, you know, how this is going to develop over the next 20 years. And the other thing, with a scattered, you know, multifamily development like this, if you look at the image that's on the screen today, you'll notice the development pattern starts at the corner. I don't actually know the history of how this developed, but there were just rectangles drawn from 12th Avenue back toward the west. And you can almost see them, you know, they, they have different depths. And, you know, there's a big one, I wish I had a pointer, but about the middle of the screen, you know, there's just this big rectangle, and then there's a smaller rectangle. And all of this leftover land between the, the west boundaries of the existing buildings and the creek, that's land that's going to be hard to use if you want to build a big institutional building like what's already been, been, been built in this 160 acres. So, I think what we can work out with the state, the county, this works really well from a management standpoint. If some of the housing units are on the north side of Main, if some of them are on the south, and you've just got a central management that bridges back and forth across Main Street, it'll work just fine. But being able to take small buildings and utilize this kind of leftover land could be a really nice way to help do something that leaves the county some big blocks to do whatever they need to do and still leave some big, big potential blocks to be developed further on the north. So, I'm not, I, who knows how it needs to work out? I draw pictures. I talk and draw pictures for a living. So, I am happy to keep redrawing this again and again until everybody's happy, including the county, the state, and especially this Norman City Council. And I think we, we'll find a way to get there.
Councilmember Tortorella?
Wanted to thank you. We talked about this for a long time, and I appreciate that you've taken the time to, to develop this and present this tonight. I think this goes a long ways in showing the city's population and citizens that we can truly work with the, the private sector and the public sector to look at problems that affect Norman. I mean, I think this is a good, good opportunity for, for the issues we face when it comes to affordable housing. So, I love the presentation. The only question I had was that you had mentioned zero-based entry. What does that mean? Just for clarification purposes.
In the shelter.
Oh, in the
Zero barrier.
Yeah, I'm going to try and get back to my slide. So, this, that building that's flipping back and forth on your screen, a lot of the shelters in Oklahoma City have come with a lot of rules. You know, you have to be working a program of some sort, and, and if you're not inside the system, you're sleeping on the street that night. So, Oklahoma City created a shelter that is, as
No barrier.
No barrier shelter. That, thank you. And so, you know, they've got a place for your dog. You know, you, obviously, you can't bring the dog into the
Right.
You know, sleeping chamber. But there's a whole kennel facility, and that's one of the things that keeps people on the street, is they're, you know, they'll have a place for their, their most important companion and very often their guardian
Right.
To, to stay. And so, they just solved all of these problems to be able to have a shelter that has no barriers. You know, you come in and you're not sober, it's okay. You, you, they, they have prepared to deal with you and get you through the night and, and when you're ready, and they get you fed. It's a neat, neat facility, and, and I hope everybody gets a chance to go visit. I, I, I think we need one here in Norman, and it needs to be sensitively woven into this somehow. We just picked a spot on the map and I took out some apartments and put it in. That may not be the perfect location for it, but I think we can find the perfect location in this larger master plan.
Councilmember Tortorella, one of the things that staff recognizes with the development of a permanent site for such a shelter is staff would propose to develop an RFP to find an operator for the shelter, just like we have the Young Family Athletic Center and the Senior Wellness Center. And we're watching the shelter, as Mr. McCowen describes, in OKC, operated by a third party who has expertise and can staff it 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And we think that is ultimately the solution for projects the city can participate in financially. We can help on the planning side. We can make relationships. And then we think they're best operated by the private sector, by nonprofits. And we hand the keys off and let them do what they do.
Again, I'm on the same page. I'm glad that members of our community have given back to our community. So, thank you again. And thank you to our family's generosity and vision. So, I, I know, no, it's just, I know it's not you, but it's everyone involved here. But, but I still want to thank you for stepping up and explaining this to us and showing this presentation. So, I appreciate it, Richard.
We get the privilege of working in this world and any knowledge we can share and, you know, we're happy to, happy to help solve this problem. Real excited. You guys are all excited to try and create, meet this need. The need is tremendous. And I'm honored you had to work on it.
Councilmember Peacock?
Yeah, we're up against the clock, so I'll be real quick. Yeah, I just want to acknowledge you and your comment about needing a zero-barrier shelter in Norman. I think that's absolutely critical. I personally have toured the City Care Facility in Oklahoma City, and it is, it's, it's world-class. And I would love to replicate their efforts down here in Norman. I think it's much needed. I want to give you credit for the creative stormwater solutions, much like all of the McCowen developments. You guys really take the bull by the horns on that one. So, you know, really proud to be able to approve those developments. Just want to go on record and say I'm also fully supportive of this whole idea, and I'm really, really excited to see where it goes from here. Thank you again.
Councilmember Sheila?
Yeah, I'll be also quick. Most of my questions around stormwater, unit cost, land purchase, all of those things have been addressed. And I'm going to pile on with the, the praise of kind of this vision. I think when we have started this conversation about affordable housing and the need for it, I think this goes well beyond what I thought was even possible for what we might think about using our ARPA money for. And so, this, this is something that gets me really excited for Norman, especially for this part of Norman and for the, the Griffin campus and, and what we can do there. So, yeah, I just thank you so much for, I mean, what Councilmember Peacock just said about the stormwater management, the mitigation, the exciting ideas about wetlands and retention and damming and, and all of those things that we don't currently have in Bishop Creek and how, if we're doing that here now, as we continue to think about the future of Norman, this is something that we can think about in other areas as we start to kind of redevelop and re-envision. So, I'm, I'm really excited about seeing this type of project move forward.
Well, we recognize consensus among members of the council, so we will, we will take that direction and we'll start busting tail on this and see how quickly we can turn around some decision topics for your consideration in the very near future. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, five minutes and we'll be back. Five-minute break. Got everybody ready to go?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, everybody, and thank you all for being here for the, uh, Norman City Council regular meeting for, um, Tuesday, December, or, actually, that's January 18th, says December, 2022. Uh, we have several, uh, items of interest on the agenda tonight. Uh, the first one, I guess I, I could read, read it right off of here. Yeah, I haven't, uh, vice-mayored a council meeting in a while, so pardon my, if I trip up a little bit here. So, good evening and welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority meeting of January 18th, 2022. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Sudley?
Here.
Councilmember Schuler?
Here.
Councilmember Lynn? Is absent. Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Tortorello?
Here.
Councilmember Foreman?
Here.
Councilmember Peacock?
Here.
Mayor Protem Holman?
Here.
Mayor Clark, who is absent.
And would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number one on our agenda tonight is consideration of approval, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement of the minutes as follows. City Council study session minutes of October 5th, 2021. City Council study session minutes of October 19th, 2020. Is that right?
Twenty-one.
Okay.
Twenty-one.
Mine says 20 in here.
Yeah.
City Council Community Planning and Transportation Committee minutes of October 28th, 2021. City Council study session minutes of November 2nd, 2021. City Council, Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority minutes of December 14th, 2021. I need a motion to approve, reject, amend, or postpone.
No.
Okay. Okay, the motion on the floor is to approve the minutes. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the minutes have been approved unanimously.
All right, item number two on the agenda is consideration of acknowledgement, approval, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement of a proclamation, a proclamation of the mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, recognizing Monday, January 17th, 2022, Martin Luther King Jr. Day in the City of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmember, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the proclamation is acknowledged unanimously.
All right, I'm gonna do the proclamations a little bit old-school, like, uh, Mayor Rosenthal used to. I'm gonna come down there. All right, can everybody hear me? Okay. So, uh, proclamation this evening, a proclamation of the City of Norman recognizing, or, Norman, Oklahoma, recognizing Monday, January 17th, 2022, as Martin Luther King Jr. Day in the City of Norman. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was born on January 15th, 1929, in Atlanta, Georgia, and whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was the most visible spokesman and leader of the American civil rights movement, and whereas the Dr. King advanced civil rights, whereas, the Dr. King advanced civil rights through nonviolence and civil disobedience, and whereas Dr. King was committed to his dream of unity and delivered over 2,500 speeches in 11 years, and whereas Dr. King continued with his mission of civil rights, even though the consequences to his nonviolent protests, marches, and speeches resulted in being arrested 29 times, and whereas in 1963, Dr. King helped organize the March on Washington, where he delivered his "I Have a Dream" speech on the steps of the Lincoln Memorial. And whereas in 1964, Dr. King was, won the Nobel Peace Prize at 35-years-old for combating racial inequality through nonviolent resistance, and whereas Dr. King was assassinated on April 4th, 1968, in Memphis, Tennessee, and whereas Martin Luther King Day was signed as a U.S. federal holiday in 1983 by President Ronald Reagan, and first celebrated in 1986. Now, therefore I, Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim Monday, January 17th, 2022, as Martin Luther King Day in the City of Norman, and I invite all citizens to continue honoring Dr. King's legacy through continued support of human rights and hope through peace and learning in our community. Passed and approved this day, 18th January, 2022. If you'd like to come up and accept this proclamation and give a few words...
Well, we'd like to thank the, uh, mayor and the city council for this proclamation on behalf of the Human Rights Commission, which I am a commissioner of, and, uh, thank the, uh, Chair Christine Owen for allowing me to accept this. We, uh, acknowledge the, the, the meaning of this proclamation to the Human Rights Commission and to citizens of Norman, that it, uh, it, it's not lost on us what that means. It is showing that the mayor and the city council are involved in continuing the inclusive committee, a co- inclusive city that we're striving to be. We don't, we celebrate Martin Luther King not only the man, but the cause, the purpose. Even though he has left his earthly plane, the cause and the purpose continues. Okay, it's, it is very important that we recognize that even to this day, we're still having these debates, discussions, and struggles for certain citizens, people of color to have the right to vote. Even though that right was granted, as we was granted citizenship by the 14th Amendment, the right to vote by the 15th Amendment, we still have to have a Voting Act, Voting Right Act be passed, and this just brings light to the, to the, to the history, to the past. And it also gives us hope that in the present, it's being acknowledged, the things that are going on with some certain people of our community. And it gives us hope for the future, that things will change, things will get better, that we, uh, as marginalized and people of color no longer have to fight for something that was given to us by the Constitution. So we thank you all, the, um, the mayor, the ci- the city council, um, Cynthia, the diverse, Chief Diversity and Equity Officer, and the Human Rights Commission. We thank you for acknowledging this and, and, uh, giving us hope for the future. Also, I'd like to mention as part of the Human Rights Commission, the Interfaith Breakfast, which coincides with Dr. Martin Luther King and his efforts of civility, and the right for all citizens to have the right to worship and assemble, the freedom that is provided for us by the Constitution of the United States. The Interfaith Breakfast was canceled due to, uh, COVID precautions. We're glad that people had the foresight to think more about safety than just about gathering, but it's there to the Human Rights Commission, it's there to majority of the community of Norman, and hopefully we can be able to put that back on next year and come together and enjoy the diversity of, of religion and diversity of people that so make up this community. So, on behalf of the Human Rights Commission, my family and friends, we thank the city, the mayor, and the city council for this proclamation. God bless you.
Item number three has been withdrawn by staff, and the next item on the agenda is council announcements, and we'll start in Ward 1.
How many announcements at this time?
All right, Ward 2.
Um, yeah, I would just like to, um, make mention, um, of the, um, special, um, testing kits that, you know, the government has been made available today. Um, so they are offering four free individual rapid antigen tests per household. Um, and if you go to the website, special.usps.com/ testkits, um, you can register there, it's super easy. I did this earlier today. It takes less than a minute. You just put in your, your name and your address, um, you hit okay, um, and then they have it, and they said that, um, test, the test kits will go out in late January. So I know that, um, because of this latest surge, that it's been hard to find tests in, you know, our CVSs, Walgreens, um, things like that for the rapid test, but then also, um, testing sites have been kind of overburdened, and there are long lines. Um, so this is just another free option to get some, uh, at-home rapid testing kits. Um, and then another, um, announcement is just, I encourage, um, all citizens of Norman to, um, kind of pay attention to what is going on with our city elections coming up, um, and the plethora of opportunities to hear about candidates, uh, with the various number of forums that are, are going on, um, upcoming in the next couple of days, um, and weeks. That's all.
Okay. Councilmember Lynn is gone, so Ward 4.
Good evening, everybody. It's exciting to be back in our shiny new, uh, room with lots of improvements yet to come, so really want to thank our city staff and all the coordination that was necessary to get most of the work done in a very short period of time, and I think you'll continue to see improvements as we go along. Also want to talk about the fact that we do have municipal elections coming up, and, um, municipal elections are known for having a low voter turnout, and when you really think about it, that's ironic, because this is where your voice can be the most effective. So make your voting plan now. Uh, we have two, um, pretty significant forums coming up this week, one sponsored by the Nor- Norman Transcript on Wednesday, January 19th, from 5:00 to 9:00. Um, I believe it's online only, and will be, um, held from this chamber, and is available on the City YouTube channel. Is that right?
It's gonna be really cool, I know.
What?
It's gonna be, you know, okay. So, yeah, stop reading those. Anyway, they're changing daily, and there's also gonna be...
Uh, League of, League of Women Voters Forum, um, on January 24th and, um, January 20th. So stay tuned, look at the latest changes, because it's changing daily, but I really urge all of you to commit to, um, listening in on at least one forum. Um, it's a great opportunity to cover a wide variety of city issues, and... And it's an opportunity for the candidates to really be able to respond in real time about, you know, what they're thinking for the future. So to go along with that, you can still request an absentee ballot through January 24th at 5:00 PM. And you can also get your ballot notarized at most banks and lots of other institutions. I've mentioned this before, I am a notary specifically for the purpose of helping people get their absentee ballots notarized. So you can also contact me through my city phone number or my city email, and I would be happy to make arrangements with you to safely find a location where I can notarize your ballot for you. So really urge everybody to get committed to a voting plan, educate yourself about the candidates because this is not an election that you want to sit out. Early voting will be on Thursday, February 3rd from 8:00 to 6:00, and Friday, February 4th also from 8:00 to 6:00. The only other thing I really want to mention tonight is that we are going to be having our first Center City Form-Based Code ad hoc committee meeting this Thursday, January 20th at 11:30. And I'm really looking forward to working with the committee to continue to find solutions that get us closer to the vision of what was originally intended with executing our Form-Based Code.
All right, Ward 5.
I have no announcements, thank you.
Ward 6.
Happy New Year. The last time I was on the dais, I had a Christmas sweater on, so I feel a little underdressed today, but I'm happy to see so many people in the audience tonight. I'm actually kind of surprised, but I'm glad you're here. As Ward 2 and 4 noted, we do have the Even Ward and Mayoral Elections coming up on February 8th. I feel like this election, we're fighting for the heart and soul of the City of Norman, so we can't afford to have anyone sit out. So please go vote. Super thrilled to see some residents from Hall Park here tonight. I'm sure they're here to see the remodel of the chambers or for item number 22. I don't know, we'll leave you in suspense on that. But I am very glad to see number, item number 22 move forward. Thank you to staff, to Sean, to everybody involved. It was a labor love for Hall Park in any small part I played, very small compared to what the residents did. I'm happy to see that go forward tonight. And I think that's it, thank you.
Ward 8.
Thank you. Yeah, just to recap this month, BACA meeting, which is the city's Business and Community Affairs Committee. We discussed a concept called pattern zoning, which if implemented will make the City of Norman easier for small developers to do high-quality infill projects. So just really excited about the potential that initiative might bring forward, and I highly recommend everybody kind of go back and watch that BACA video from the last meeting. Also, I have heard some concerns from constituents involving the crossing to Ruby Grant Park on 36th Street. So I have asked staff to find ways to improve that crossing at the entrance of the park. So over the next few weeks, residents will begin seeing some improved signage. There's going to be some flashing warning signs installed as part of a short-term solution while the, while staff continues to look into implementing a more long-term crosswalk solution. So just keep your eyes out for that and an ever-improving situation over there.
Thank you. Couple things for me. I had a great honor last, last night, filling in for Mayor Clark at the Martin Luther King Celebration Concert put on by the Norman Philharmonic at McFarland Church. I just gave the welcoming, so it was pretty brief, but it was a really nice program, some really, I'd only heard the Philharmonic a few times, but they're really amazing. If you haven't had a chance to attend a show of the Norman Phil, Norman Phil as they go by, I highly recommend it. It was well-attended, and we had several wonderful speakers that talked about the legacy of Dr. King and his impact on our, our local community, on our state, and on our, our nation as a whole. So I appreciate having the opportunity to have filled in for that. I also want to join my colleagues in encouraging everybody in Norman to get out and vote in the upcoming local elections. I agree 100%, those are the most important, in my opinion. Your local government has the most direct impact on your daily lives, and your local government is also the most accessible government to you as well. We're the only form of government that has a public podium that you're allowed to come up and address us at. The State Capitol and the Capitol in Washington do not have that opportunity. And so right here is where it's at, and it's extremely important. Every vote can make all the difference in local elections, I know firsthand, so. And then third, I mentioned the City Hall improvements, a lot's going on. It's a lot brighter in here than it normally has been for a long time. These are not the permanent seats that will be in here. Some of you might have a hard time not sliding out of those things, so they're on a slant right there. But I guess they're backordered, they're on a cargo ship perhaps, but new permanent chairs will be coming in. We are working to make our City Hall more accessible, easier for us to broadcast meetings, which in turn makes it better for the community at large to know what's going on down here. So we're hoping that these improvements are going to make City Hall a better representation of the community place that it is, so. And then lastly, just want to send a message out to Mayor Clark. As many of you know, she is quarantined in a hotel room. She's not hanging out on the beach in Costa Rica having a good time. She is locked in a hotel room. And I, from what I understand, that's not entirely pleasant from the people I've talked to that have had that experience. And so she will be there, from last I heard, probably until Sunday at least. So wish her well. Hopefully it's a mild or really no symptoms case at all, but we'll try to keep things going here until she gets back. So thank you all for being here tonight and taking the time out of your evening. We are going to go ahead and move on to the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items, agenda items, that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with approval of all council members, it will be heard in regular order. Staff recommends that items 4 through 32 excluding item 27 be placed on the consent docket. I need a motion to place items 4 through 32 excluding item 27 on the consent docket.
So moved.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to place items 4 through 33.
Oh, 32, I'm sorry.
32 on the consent docket. Council members, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and items 4 through 32 excluding item 27 have been placed on the consent docket unanimously.
All right. Item number four, ordinance upon first reading by title, rezoning property located west of Alafont Avenue between Alameda Drive, Street, Residential Estates Dwelling District to CR Rural Commercial District. Item number five is ordinance upon first reading by title, granting special use for medical marijuana processing Tier 3 in the C2 General Commercial District located at 1228 Lindsay Plaza Drive. Item number six, ordinance upon first reading by title, removing part of the northwest quarters of Section 29 Township 9 North, Range 2 West of the Indian Meridian from R1 Single Family Dwelling District, C3 Intensive Commercial District, and O1 Office Institutional District, and placing the same in the PUD, Planned Unit Development District, Norman Regional Health System Porter Campus. Item number seven, ordinance upon first reading by title, closing certain public interest in an alley and rights of way located at the Norman Regional Health System Porter Campus site. Item number eight, ordinance upon first reading by title, amending Chapter 22 zoning ordinance, Article, I can't, I don't know that Roman numeral, Specific District Regulations, Section 429.3 in definitions deleting conservation and adding original period of significance, relocation, and secretary of the interior standards of historic buildings. Edits for consistency and correction purposes, adding written denial requirement, adding seven-day notice, extending time limit of the certificate of appropriateness, COA, from six months to 12 months, and restructuring exceptions to administrative bypass. Item number nine, or, this one's pretty long. Ordinance upon first reading by title, an ordinance increasing the monthly base fee for residential metered users from $6 to $7.80, increasing the monthly water rates for residential metered users from $3.35 to $4.20 per 1,000 gallons for the first 5,000 gallons of water from $4.10 to $5.15 per 1,000 gallons for water usage between 5,100 and 15,000 gallons. From $5.20 to $6.50 per 1,000 gallons for water used between 15,100 and 20,000 gallons. And from $6.80 to $8.50 per 1,000 gallons for water usage over 20,000 gallons. Increasing the monthly base fee for non-residential water service from $6 to $7.80, increasing the water rates for non-residential metered users from $3.80 to $4.35 per 1,000 gallons for water usage up to such customers' average winter consumption as defined herein from our four, from $4, from $4.20 to $4.80 per 1,000 gallons for water usage exceeding such non-residential metered users' average winter consumption as defined herein. Providing an effective date for said increase subject to voter approval, contingent on voter approval of ordinance, ordinance 0-2122-35. Everybody get that? Follow along? Item number 10, ordinance upon first reading by title, an ordinance of authorizing the calling and holding of a special election on the 5th day of April 2022 for the purpose of submitting to the registered voters of the City of Norman the question of approving or rejecting ordinance 0-2122-34, increasing the water rates as previously, as previously read. Item number 11, approval of the Mayor's appointments as follows. Norman Regional Hospital Authority, Mary Womack, Ward 5. Dr. Mohammed Anwar, Ward 8. Dr. Diane Chambers, Ward 3. Item number 12, acknowledgement of the monthly departmental report for the month of November 2021. Item number 13, acknowledgement of the Norman Convention and Visitors Bureau, Inc., Visit/Norman Annual Report from July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. Item number 14 is a bid for the purchase of a 30-ton carbon dioxide tank from Tomco Systems Company in the amount of $228,975 for water, for the water treatment plant. Item number 15, acceptance of a donation in the amount of $500 from the J.M. Williams Revocable Trust to be used for training for the Norman Police Department and budget transfer as outlined in the staff report. Item number 16, approval of the reallocation of available funds to the capital fund balance as outlined in the staff report and the attachments for the 2012 Transportation Bond Program reconciliation. Item number 17, Norman Rural Certificate of Survey for Little River Estates and the acceptance of an easement located at the northwest corner of the intersection of 120th Avenue, Southeast and Cedar Lane. Item number 18, final plat for Club Car Wash at St. James Center located at the southeast corner of Classen Boulevard and Cedar Lane. Item number 19, change order number two to the contract with Nash Construction Company, increasing the contract by $80,000 for a revised contract amount of $439,109 and budget appropriation and transfers as outlined in the staff report. Amendment number one to the inter-local agreement contract with Central Oklahoma Transportation and Parking Authority, DBA, embark, increasing the contract amount by $10687.58 for a revised amount not to exceed $3,469,655.58 to add to the provision of washing and fueling services to the service agreement for the City of Norman Public Transit Fleet. Contract, item number 21, 21, contract between the Norman Utilities Authority and Oklahoma Electric Cooperative for a distribution cooperative agreement for the interconnection of distributed, distributed generation at the Water Reclamation Facility at 3,500 Jenkins Avenue. Item number 22, contract with Hall Park Property Owners Association, Inc. for vegetative management at Hall Park Lakes. Item number 23, contract between the City of Norman, the Norman Municipal Authority, and Crossland Construction Company, Inc. in the amount of $32,250 for construction manager at-risk services for the Emergency Communications Center and Emergency Operations Center. Item number 24, amendment number three to the contract with the Norman Municipal Authority and Architects Design Group, Inc., increasing the contract amount by $1,097,405 for a revised contract amount of $2,152,611 to provide additional professional architectural design service, services, and adding the Norman Municipal Authority as a party to the contract and its various amendments for the Emergency Communications Center slash Emergency Operations Center. Item number 25, contract, a purchase-sale agreement with JP Morgan Chase Bank in the amount of $435,000 for the purchase of real property located at 318-320 East Comanche Street, and authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute any documents on behalf of the City of Norman to continue the sale process. Item number 26, contract with Tetra Tech, Inc. to provide consultant services to the, to update the City of Norman Disaster Debris Management Plan. And item number 27 has been moved off consent. Item number 28, resolution of the Norman Utilities Authority authorizing the chairman to submit Oklahoma Gas and Electric Company interconnection applications for the solar project at the Water Reclamation Facility and the Water Treatment Plant. Item number 29 is a resolution assigning contract K-8990-32 with Haskell Lemon Construction Company to Haskell Lemon Group, LLC, and assigning all rights and duties as lessee under the contract to Haskell Lemon Group, LLC. Item number 30 is a resolution adopting the 2021 ADA Transit Transition Plan as an addendum to the 2018 Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan in order to improve accessibility for city programs, services, activities, facilities, project decisions, and improvements that are planned and guided by the current Americans with Disabilities Act requirements. Item number 31, resolution accepting the apportionment of $919,549 to the Federal Transit Administration's Norman Urbanized Area through the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, and authorizing the city manager or his designee to submit, execute, and file an application on behalf of the City of Norman with the United States Department of Transportation to formally program the funding for a vehicle wash facility. Item number 32 is a resolution creating an ad hoc committee to review potential amendments to the Center City Form-Based Code, appointing members and designating a chairperson. I need a motion to approve or reject the consent docket.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket?
I'd just like to take a moment to recognize, let's see, agenda item number 30, the report that has been developed for the 2020, 2021 ADA Transit Transition Plan. We had a sneak preview of this report, and I would urge anyone who has interest in what the city is doing to address our compliance with ADA requirements as regards to public transit, to take a look at this extremely detailed evaluation that was done to every single bus stop that we currently have in Norman and what the recommended fixes are for each bus stop. This has been comprehensive, and I just want to shout out to Jesse Hill, who has done all of this work and along with his staff and the department that supports him. It's really interesting to read, and it gives you an idea of what our commitment is to address the problems that we have with some of our bus stops. So I wanted to recognize all the effort that went into that report. And then I also wanted to also point out, as I mentioned in my And then I also wanted to also point out, as I mentioned in my remarks, that we will have our first Center City Form-Based Code ad hoc committee, and I just want to thank the people who have been appointed tonight that are willing to serve and put in the effort to do this work for the next six months.
Councilmember Studley.
I just wanted to say that I'm excited to see us moving forward on purchasing the land from JP Morgan Chase, and I'm excited to see what we're going to do with it in the future. That's all I have.
I had a question with the item 20 on the bus, the EMBARK contract, if Sean O'Leary's here. Just on the, the per hour cost for the new employees to wash the bus or maintain the buses while they're so high. Originally, I thought they were $14 an hour prices, but the pay scale, but it looks like we're paying up to $37, at least $31 for a full-time employee to clean the buses. Has that changed? I mean, why has that changed on item 20?
Taylor Johnson, Transit Parking Program Manager. We're actually amending EMBARK's contract to change where the City of Norman staff is no longer doing the night services of fueling, cleaning, and washing, and we're going to move that responsibility to EMBARK. So if, does that make sense?
I couldn't hear you.
Oh.
So, so.
Let me.
Go ahead, thank you.
So, just to clarify, for this amendment to EMBARK's contract for this fiscal year, we're asking to change the, some of the duties that we split between us and the, us and EMBARK, where we were fueling and cleaning and washing the vehicles in the evening, and we're going to move that responsibility to EMBARK. So when we broke down the costs, it was really pretty close to being budget neutral for what we were paying to do the service ourselves, and we just felt like it was more efficient for that handshake to be done between EMBARK, between the night service and the day service as they, as they transitioned the fleet offline and then back online.
All right, well, thank you for the clarification.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, it does make sense. I just, I didn't see that when I was reading it, and that clarified. The clarification is good for me here, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem.
If we get our facility built for washing our, our fleet trucks, would we then maybe transition back to our city staff, or they would just use our supply?
Yeah, they would just run it through the vehicle wash facility. Similar to what we do at OU right now, our staff drives our buses through their vehicle wash facility.
Thank you.
Further questions from council? The motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been approved. The consent docket passes unanimously.
All right, move on to the non-consent docket. Consideration, item number 27 is consideration of adoption, rejection amendment, and more, and post, and/or postponement of Resolution R-2122-73, Resolution appropriating $27,300 from the Federal Caesar, Seizure and Restitution Fund Balance to purchase year four of the Axon Technology Assurance Plan under Contract K-1819-57. I need a motion to approve or reject the resolution.
Second.
And city manager, I, I had asked you about some potential alternative funding. The reason why I requested to remove this item is not that I object to the purchase, the agreement that we've been in for a couple of years, but I, I have made my feelings about civil asset forfeiture at the federal and local government pretty well-known, and my request was if we could find this funding anywhere else in the city, that I would definitely feel much more comfortable approving it if it wasn't from the forfeiture fund. And so you were able to get with the city finance director, and is there an alternate funding source we've been able to identify, I guess I should say? Mr. Francisco. Alternative funding source? Mr. Francisco.
I'm Anthony Francisco, the finance director. If it is the council's desire to continue the contract, I think the appropriate item or action of the council would be to just direct the city manager to find funds from available appropriations within the general fund, because the contract refers to the seizure and restitution fund, so I think you need to just direct a different fund.
And so is there a motion we would need to make?
Yeah, I think the motion would be to amend Section 5 of the resolution to direct the city manager to find available funds from available general fund appropriations.
Okay. Can I make that motion? Okay. I would like to make that motion that we fund this, but with, direct the city manager to find other funding.
Do we have to vote on the motion on the floor, or are we amending the motion? Just for clarification? Okay.
My second.
Okay. Are there any comments from council regarding the amendment? And I might ask Chief Foster, maybe just to come up and give a refresher on this, how long we've been doing this and what this is for, just so everybody knows what we're, what item we're talking about.
Yeah, this was a contract with Axon that replaced all our tasers and the equipment for all of them. And it was a five-year contract, starting in 18. Initially purchased, the 163 we paid up front was out of the seizure and restitution. That's how it was sort of laid out. And knowing some disagreements with using seizure, I brought it up this morning to look for different accounts, and we can definitely do that.
Okay.
I just, I just got to get the bill paid.
Absolutely.
$27,300, we're in the fourth year. We've got one more year of it, then we'll decide, you know, if we want to renew that same type of plan or go with something different.
Been satisfied so far?
Yes.
Good. Any comments or questions from council about, about this product, this agreement, funding? Okay. All right, then the motion on the, or councilor Hall, she, her thing's not popping up.
My only comment is I want to make sure to go on record that I support funding the equipment purchases to adequately equip the Norman Police Department, but I would prefer to find an alternative funding source as well.
Thank you, chief. And is there, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this amendment. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment about this particular Seeing none. Are there any final comments from council about this item, this amendment? Okay. Councilor Peacock.
I, I fully understand where everybody on council's coming from. I just don't think that I, I'm comfortable spending general fund revenues on this, and I prefer to see it spent the way it was listed on the agenda, so.
All right. The motion on the floor is to approve the amendment. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
The motion, I'm sorry, vote is four to seven, so the vote fails. It needs five to pass. Voting against, Councilmember Peacock, Councilmember Foreman, Councilmember Tortorello. So now we would be back to the main motion to adopt as presented.
Okay, the, again, the resolution, the original resolution is a resolution appropriating $27,300 from the Federal Caesar, Seizure and Restitution Fund Balance to purchase year four of the Axon Technology Assurance Plan under Contract K-1819-57. Any comments about the, back to the original one from council? Councilmember Schuler.
I would just like to go on record that I, this is not, I think, about the, the technology, the tasers, the purchase of this. For the police department, I think that it's really important for the police department to have the tools that they need to equip them for, especially for less-than-lethal or non-lethal ways to, to do their, their jobs. And I think we're in year four of this contract, and while I would like to see us move away from this funding source and using in the future, this was something that was done by a previous council in years before. We've had conversations about using this type of revenue stream. So, you know, I'm, on the last, on the amendment, on to it, voted yes to use an alternate funding mechanism, and that would be my preference. But I think that because we are this far along, and I think the police department needs to continue utilizing this equipment, it will also be a yes to make sure that they have the equipment that they need, but I would like to see us move along after, you know, even next year have this conversation, and then in the future, when we continue contracts, to look at a different funding mechanism.
Thank you. Councilmember Foreman.
So I think, as most of you know, for almost a decade, I did finance at a police department. I know that we have our own personal experiences with this, and so we feel differently. I, working with the finance, buying these things, spending the studio funds that we had, I see it differently via state statutes, and I do feel comfortable moving forward with this. I think a less lethal option is always the best thing, and anything we can do to equip our officers with that option, it's safer for the public and it's safer for them, so I'm happy to support this tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Tortorello.
Well, she stole my thunder. I was going to say exactly the same thing here. I see no problem with this, and I'd like to move this forward. You know, we need to make sure that our officers are equipped with the, with the tools in need, and I don't see, I don't see a reason why we can't use the funds from this fund to go forward. And, you know, I agree, and this should go forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Studley.
I share the same sentiments as Councilmember Holman in regards to this. I don't believe that we should use money that we've obtained from seizing property from people, because we've seen in many cases where that property was not seized legally. So for that reason, I'm not going to vote for this tonight, but I do understand the need for this equipment, and I wish that we would have found a different funding source for it.
Councilmember Hall. My comments would be that, again, I just, I have, I have voted against the use of these funds before for the reasons given. I think they are highly controversial. Civil asset forfeiture can often involve property being taken from people without any criminal charges being filed, without any conviction being obtained, and I just feel like that is inherently wrong. And so I'm opposed to civil asset forfeiture and its use, which is why I try to find any alternate funding whenever we can, if we can, without using those funds for things. But I do agree that the police department does need these. We have been in a contract for a couple of years with this, and I do not have an interest in us messing up or getting out of a contract that we're in the middle of without fulfilling our obligations. So I made an attempt to provide an alternate funding source that I would feel comfortable, more comfortable with, and others may as well, that has failed, so I accept that. And because this is an existing contract, and we're short on votes tonight, I am going to support this because I don't want to risk, you know, defaulting on our contract here. And as the chief says, they have been a valuable resource, they are a less lethal, not non-lethal, but less lethal option. And so I will support this tonight, but given the circumstances, but I do absolutely want to make clear, and, and second, the comments about going forward, not entering into any other contracts that require or ask for us to use those funds. It's legal to use them. I understand that argument. I've heard that for many years, that it's okay because it's legal. Civil asset forfeiture funds are legal, but I don't think that they are ethical, in my opinion. So that's my comments on this one, and we will move on to a, Councilmember Hall.
I say thank you, Councilmember Holman. I was struggling on getting my thoughts together, but you expressed it just as I would have wished, so thank you.
Okay. And do, is there any public comment about the non-amended original item that we're voting on? Anybody out there? Okay. All right, councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion passes by a vote of six to one, voting against Councilmember Studley.
Okay, there has been an issue with the agenda, so I'm going to read a short thing here from the clerk. You may have noticed the wording on your agenda for item 33 is the same as item number 31 on the consent docket, instead of the land use plan for Sooner Traditions. I will recognize Madam Clerk for a brief explanation.
The Land Use Plan Amendment and zoning for Sooner Traditions was previously postponed, as you all know, for tonight's agenda. Due to a technical error, the Land Use Plan Amendment did not appear on the agenda. This was not noticed until it was brought to our attention Friday night. Under the Oklahoma, Oklahoma Meeting Act, you can only, I'm sorry, it's the Open Meeting Act, I don't remember why I said Oklahoma. You can only amend an agenda once posted, up to 24 hours prior to the meeting. However, that does exclude weekends and holidays. So once it was brought to our attention, we were past that 24-hour window. Therefore, I was not able to amend the agenda to correct that error. The, since the item was previously postponed to tonight and did not actually make it on the agenda, it will automatically appear on council's agenda next week, January the 25th. The rezoning ordinance cannot be considered by council without the Land Use Plan Amendment. So therefore, as a matter of process, council will need to postpone the zoning ordinance tonight as well to January 25th, when the Land Use Plan Amendment will also appear on the agenda, and then you can take further action however you see fit.
Appreciate that explanation. We, Councilmember Hall and I were trying to understand how this was going to work, so we, okay, yeah.
I did want to also add, to the neighbors and applicant for this item, I offer my sincere apologies. It was a glitch that we just didn't catch. I know you all have been working on it quite hard, and I certainly apologize for any, any inconvenience this created for you on this having to come back and again next week.
So just to be clear, the item tonight has to, by default, be postponed until next Tuesday. And then next Tuesday, the applicant can decide to go forward with it or could ask for another postponement if they wanted to. That would be next Tuesday, though.
Correct. The applicant can still request another postponement, but council would have to vote on that.
So we're postponing this, this decision until next Tuesday due to a.
Due to the technical error that the Land Use Plan Amendment did not appear on the agenda.
Okay. Is everybody on council clear on that? Okay. Do we need to do anything for that?
Just wanted to read it like that.
Okay. See, item number 34, consideration of postponement of ordinance 0-2122-15, upon second and final reading, rezoning property located at 1027 and 1035 South Berry Road to January 25th, 2022, which would be next Tuesday, a week from today. I need a motion to postpone the ordinance to January 22nd, 25th, 2022.
Motion to postpone.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay. Are there any comments from council regarding this amendment?
On November 30th, 2021, our last council meeting, the attorney for the applicant requested a postponement until December 14th to continue to work on the project. Due to scheduling conflicts, the city and the applicant agreed to postpone these two agenda items until tonight, January 18th. The council approved this request unanimously. As of tonight, the applicant has had seven weeks to continue working on the project when they indicated they only needed two. There is no policy that requires the city council to approve a request to postpone from the applicant. The first postponement has often been approved as a courtesy to the applicant, which we did grant in this case. I was notified on January 10th that the attorney for the applicant formally requested a postponement of these two agenda items until February 22nd. That is three city council meetings from tonight for a total of 12 weeks or three months since our November 30th meeting. The last time the spud was revised was on November 29th, 2021, the day before our November 30th. The last time the SPUD was revised was on November twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one, the day before our November thirtieth council meetings. Seven weeks later, that same document is attached to our agenda tonight. This tells me that no progress has been made in seven weeks, even though the applicant was provided more time than he requested. Asking to postpone another five weeks does not demonstrate a commitment to acting in good faith with this council or with the community. Agendas are not posted to the council or to the public until five P M. on the Friday prior to our council meeting. In other words, not until after business hours. It's my habit to review the agenda on Friday night to anticipate how to manage my weekend and prepare for the week ahead. On the evening of Friday, January fourteenth, I notified the city manager that the title on agenda item number thirty-three was incorrect and that the title needed to be corrected and the agenda amended. I was notified this morning that we have no choice but to postpone this item until January twenty-fifth for all the reasons that the city clerk just outlined. But I do want to point out that after almost two years, two separate applications, multiple delays controlled by the applicant, countless public meetings and feedback solicited from planning commissioners and council members, as well as neighbors prepared to show up ten separate times at scheduled public meetings, including tonight, what we have seen to date are incremental changes to what is essentially the same commercial strip center introduced in two thousand fifteen to Ward Four and Ward Two neighbors who will be impacted the most and have stayed engaged against all odds. Based on what I've seen, there is no new information being provided that would convince me that another postponement is needed or necessary. Now, because of a technical, technical error, we are forced, forced to postpone one more week. So the only reason I will be voting yes to postpone, postpone is because I have to.
Any other comments from council? And this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this postponement. Are there any public comments?
There is. Thank you, councilmember. And Councilmember Hall, thank you for those comments. I would disagree with you that this is not in good faith. I think I would share with you that we have met with councilmembers, yourself included, and Councilmember Shuler. Most recently, we met with Councilmember Holman and Councilmember Peacock, and they requested some changes in the architecture. And we said, okay, we would like to run that by Mayor Clark as well. Shortly after that, Mayor Clark became detained. I tried to reach out to Mayor Clark promptly out of those meetings and did not receive a response until I got a response that I am out of the country, I'll be back by X date. Next thing I knew, she is detained there for quite a long time. Councilmember Holman and Peacock were aware of those matters. I think it's fair that we run that by the mayor, and so we attempted that. She will not be back. I don't know until when. I assume soon. February eighth, my client has a problem with that date. And so then we were hopeful that we would move it to February twenty-second, and we are working on drawings. I think that is not a fair accusation to say there's not been effort here. In fact, we've made every effort to try to more or less appease the desire to have a different architecture. We think that's, that's valid, and we appreciate that concern, and we're happy to try to do that. But we need to make sure that we have that discussion with the Mayor Clark as well and that the architect, Rick McKinney, has time to do those. But we want to hear their feedback from Mayor Clark, too. She's not aware of that discussion. So that is what the context of that postponement is. I reached out to you on the tenth, eight days ago, to make sure you had time, and Councilmember Shuler, so that you were aware of that. In fact, that's our hope, that you would be aware of that. You're in communication with neighborhoods, and you would be, have that ability to share with them that request. So I very much take exception with any notation that this was not in good faith. We made every effort to do this in good faith, and it was through the request of other councilmembers to have a different architecture. That was the essence of that request. Thank you. And I understand, by the way, the defect. I do understand you have to do this because the one item is not even on the agenda tonight. If that makes sense, we have to do that. But we will be back here to request that postponement so that we can try to get there in the architecture that would make this corner fantastic. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other public comments about this proposed postponement? Please state your name and address.
My name is John Cornwell. I live at eight eighteen Cary Drive, and I'm within the zone of encroachment or whatever it's called. I got a call from Ms. Hall, and I very much appreciate that. I was able to contact most of the residents and let them know not to come. But this project has been going on since two thousand fifteen. Not by this particular applicant the whole time, but basically the same etch a sketch. Move a box around a bigger box and find something that will be acceptable to somebody. It's never been acceptable to the neighborhood. And while I understand why the council has to postpone this, I would like it to be postponed one week and get it over with next week. Thank you.
Any other public comment on this item?
Mayor Portman, we did have a couple sign up. I don't know that they wish to speak because they had signed up prior to knowing this, but David Narenz?
Nerens?
Nerens, I may have butchered that. David and Michelle Nerens. Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Went to high school with their son. Okay, I see no further public comment about this item. Are there any final comments from council regarding this postponement? Seeing none. The motion on the floor is to postpone the ordinance to January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, item number thirty-five, is a consideration of adoption, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement of resolution R dash twenty-one, twenty-two dash eight-six, a resolution of the Councilman, Oklahoma, approving an appeal of the temporary administrative delay to allow the submittal of a permit application for the construction of a triplex with a rear parking area at seven nineteen Dean's Row Avenue. I need a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
Still moved?
Second.
Is there a representative of the applicant to make a presentation?
Good evening. I'm Mark Crittenbrink with Crittenbrink Architecture, and Doug Wall is with me. Doug is one of the owners. The other is Ryan Broyles. Our plan is, we are in the, you know, Centi City Form Base Code. This is a lot that's seventy-five by one hundred and forty feet deep. We are allowed to build a triplex there, and that's what we are doing. We, I think you have the plans in front of you. It's three different units, three different three-bedroom units, and ones on either side are identical. They're just flipped. They measure about two thousand square feet, and the one in the center is a little bit larger. It probably measures about twenty-two hundred square feet. The site has three storefronts. There's a courtyard in the front, which we feel like the owners want to make this really reminiscent of OU, so we're looking at that kind of, of our, that kind of architecture, although it's architecture that is evolving. So we have that front courtyard, which will be cool. Again, the three units, the staggered entry. We're meeting all, we've met with Anna Eas and Jane and Logan two or three times to make sure we're hitting on all cylinders. You know, I've got fifty percent of my required building line is covered. And, and we have the adequate amount of parking, and where we have it is good. And I have the backyard private space, the square footage that is allowed for that. And if you look, we have a fairly big yard in the back that the three share. And again, two, two stories, three bedrooms. It's a great project. We're excited to be here. We just missed the gun on this, so this is a process we're going through to move forward. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
And just to be clear, thank you, Mr. Crittenbrink. We're not approving this project. We're voting on whether to allow this to go, to start the process of, of, to start the development process. That's the way I understand this vote. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's what I understand.
All right, let's see. Are there any comments from council regarding this item? Councilmember Hall?
Thank you for filling us in. I just have a couple of questions. And thank you also for the clarification because this is the first appeal that's come before us since the administrative delay has been put into place on December fourteenth. So I think it's important that we all understand that what we're doing is just deciding about whether the project can move forward. So there's still substantial work to be done. You haven't been to the development review team as of yet. So this is really about forwarding the project. So in the midst of a delay, I have, first, I want to talk about why I think that this project merits moving forward. And number one, I really appreciate you taking advantage of that seventy-five foot lot. Those are rare, really, in this middle frontage, I think, is my understanding. There aren't that many lots that are seventy-five feet wide. And your decision to go with a triplex, which is also a housing type that you don't generally find in this area. So one of the goals of what we're trying to accomplish while we take a look at the, the work that we're going to be doing during the delay is trying to encourage multiple housing types and not just a single housing type, which we have seen mostly built. So the fact that it's a triplex, that it's three-bed, planned as three-bedroom units, that's a housing type that we don't generally see in the residential areas in Center City. So I think that's the plus. I really am intrigued with how you are incorporating a courtyard feel in the front. So I think, you know, those are all really good reasons why we should consider granting the appeal. But I do have a couple of questions just about the floor plan. So I was noticing on, let's see, it's, I think, unit A. On the second floor, one of the things that we are starting to see more is adding an office to these two and three bedroom, which are rare in Center City, but you've added an office. But we also know that there's the ability to turn that into a bedroom at a later date. And the only reason I'm asking about it is because you have two sinks in that plan. So are you, what, what were your...
Actually, let me address that because that came, Anna Eas called me today, or Jane called me today on that.
Okay.
So it is, so this is really geared towards family, which, you know, is a lot of what one of, Center City Center Form Base Code is about, let's get families down there. So think about it, if you have some older kids, they have that play area upstairs and whatnot. So that's the concept behind it. And honestly, when we were doing that, at the very last minute, I was working with Celestis, and we increased the length of that bathroom.
Oh, okay.
And I said, oh, it's so long. Let's make it compartmentalized. Let's put in two sinks. And it was just haphazard. So we'll be, we can take one of those out.
Okay, I was just wondering what the...
It was just a spasm of generosity.
Throw in a...
Spasm of plumbing generosity.
If one sink is good, two sinks are better.
Let's get three.
Yeah. And, you know, the other thing I think we need to consider as we're, you know, still trying to survive the pandemic is how office spaces like this are going to be used in a different way moving forward. And that in a three-bedroom unit such as this, it does give an opportunity for a family that actually could live here to have a space, a dedicated space for virtual learning when public schools are shut down, for example, or a home office space because so many people are working remotely now. So I think, you know, that's in the balance, too. So I was just curious as to what your thinking were, but overall...
That's why we have, we have double, either double three-foot or double four-foot track doors. So it can be open, so when you come up, you can, you know, see it. But if you're working in there, you can shut the doors, and then you have some kind of privacy.
So for me personally, this is ticking off all of the boxes of the kind of projects that we're hoping to see. So thank you for bringing it forward, and I want to thank...
Thank the owners.
Yes, because the other thing that we're hoping to see is more small developers come into Center City and, and come forward with new projects, new and creative projects. So I appreciate you doing that, too. So thank you for bringing this project to us.
Councilmember Peacock?
I think I'll just second Councilmember Hall's comments. She said it perfectly. Thank you.
Yeah, and I would just say it's exciting to have someone like Ryan Broyles be involved in this project. Many folks know Ryan as being a superstar athlete at OU playing football, but Ryan's also a kid that grew up in Norman and has lived his entire life here. Other than the couple of years he played for the Detroit Lions, he has lived in this community his entire life. So to see him grow up here and become successful in the real estate business and investing back into his community is exactly what we want to see and what a lot of communities want to see. So I'm excited to see this go along.
Full disclosure, Ron and I were playing pat catch with a football. I'm much better than him. Right, Doug?
All right, any further council comments about this? Okay, and let's see, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Are there any speakers? There's none? Okay, is there anybody in the audience that has any comment about this item? Seeing none, okay. Are there any final comments from council about this? Okay, the motion on the floor is to approve the preliminary plat? Okay, yeah, it says, it says that on here, so, wait a minute, am I looking at the, okay, I'm looking at, I'm on the next one. I'm looking at thirty-six. The motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been... The motion to adopt the resolution passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you. Item number thirty-six is a consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement of a preliminary plat for the apostolic, apostolic? Worship Center, generally located thirteen hundred feet south of Tecumseh Road on the east side of Porter Avenue, thirty-two, thirty-one North Porter Avenue, it looks like. So I need a motion to approve or reject the preliminary plat.
Still moved?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Tortorella. Is there a representative of the applicant to make a presentation?
Good evening. My name is Kent Mace. I'm with MacVax Land Surveying. This particular project, this is a five-acre tract. The church has been there for many, many years. The, all the land around it has been developed, and it's all platted. The, the church is wanting to do an addition to the, the site. One of the requirements is that it needs to be platted. It's never been platted. So that's where we're at. That's, that's what we're seeking tonight. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Are there any comments, questions from council on this item? Seeing none. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers registered for this item? Are there any people in the audience that would like to speak about this item? Okay? And any final comments from council about this item? Okay, the motion on the floor is to approve the preliminary plat. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the preliminary plat is approved unanimously.
Okay. Thank you. Item number thirty-seven is consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement of a preliminary plat for Alpine Motorsports, generally located one-half mile west of Porter Avenue on the south side of West Tecumseh Road, five-ten West Tecumseh Road. I need a motion to approve or reject the preliminary plat.
Still moved?
Second.
Second.
Is there a representative of the applicant to make a presentation?
I'm J.W. Dansby. This is the owner, Mike Roberts. And this is a preliminary plat. It's one-acre tract. It's at five-ten West Tecumseh Road. Excuse me, and he, it's, it's a one-acre tract, and it's the same situation as the previous item. Has not been planted, and so we're here, here for, to get the preliminary plat approved. And if you have any questions.
Are there any comments, questions from council regarding this item? I'm seeing none. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments or ask questions about this item. Madam Clerk, are there any registered for this item? There are not. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak about this item? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak about this item? Okay. All right. Are there any final comments from council about this item? Okay. The motion on the floor is to approve the preliminary plat. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
My votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the preliminary plat passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Item number 38, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement of a preliminary plat for Trent Estates, located at the southeast corner of 96th Avenue, northeast, and Rock Creek Road, a closed street. I need a motion to approve or reject the preliminary plat.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Is there a representative of the applicant to make a presentation? Please come forward.
This is my husband and I's property, and we currently own a little over 25 acres. It's heavily wooded. Our home site is only on about an acre, and the property is subject to a lot of restrictions. And so one of the most important being that it's in the watershed, and so it's on a 10-acre, each home has to be on 10 acres. This has already gone through the Green Belt Commission, and we have a very adequate plan in place to protect the watershed. And the other side of the property has another acre that would be available for building if someone wanted to put a home there. And we just don't need that much property. When we originally purchased the property, and my husband runs an apiary, and so we were planning on having bees all over the property, but his job transferred him to southeastern Oklahoma. He's in Atoka now, and so he has moved his bee business. So we still own the property. We're not going to let go of it, because he's very close to retirement, and our family is all here. But we don't need that much land, and so we're looking at splitting it in half. We are in discussion with a community organization that is looking at picking it up for the purpose of trails, and they would not be developing it at all. So we're kind of hoping that they will be the ones that get the property, but we're just splitting the property in half.
Okay. And comments from council? See Counselor Peacock?
First, I just want to commend you on that last point. I really hope you guys are able to find somebody to use it in its natural state. I think that's a huge win. I do see the large swath of the property is covered with a WQ, WQPZ. Can you, you alluded to some of the things you're going to do to mitigate that. Can you highlight those?
Yes. So it's also subject to a Department of Reclamation easement, and so you can't use that property at all. Basically, we could run, like, cattle on there, which we don't have it fenced, and it's really just deer and turkey all throughout. And there's, there's a lot of native, like, persimmon trees, pecan trees, blackberries that we have harvested. But we really have not changed the land use, nor can we. You can't build a home in that zone. And you can build, like, a shop or an outbuilding, and we built a shop on the 1062 line, which the 1064 line is where you can build. So you can see that on the half of the tract. You'll see our, our shop, and that's what he managed his bees out of, sorry. But, yeah, basically the same restrictions. There's probably, there's more land on the other side that's available for building if someone wanted, I think, maybe three and a half to four acres that they could build a home on. And it's right off the corner, it's within the neighborhood. So there's a neighborhood there, Indian Hills Estates, and so the corner access would lead in from Indian Hills Estates. And then there was a Kiwanis Park on the southern tip of our property. It's now owned by the YMCA.
Okay. And so you, you don't have any plans to develop up close to the WQPZ boundary at all?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, and they wouldn't be able to either. There's restrictions in place that are listed on the plat. Department of Reclamation provided the language that's on the plat.
I appreciate you clarifying that.
Uh-huh.
Okay. So from what I understand, the property is, will maintain its rural look, basically is what I understand, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I might have a question for Ms. Hudson about, just want to clarify and make sure this is not, this is still in compliance with the one per 10 acre, or is this property predate that? Basically, just making sure if it is developed, that there's...
Yeah, so we're, we have our home...
I heard you mention that part. Just want to make sure...
Sure.
That since we're past 48th Avenue, that we're not altering the one house per 10 acre rule.
Good evening, Jane Hudson, Planning Director. Counselor Holman, I am not 100% sure. I have not dealt with this one a lot, so I'm going to have to look at it real quick.
Okay.
This is actually coming through Public Works, so...
Maybe Sean might have some...
Yeah, I'm, I'm so sorry, I'm not a...
Oh, no. Got you on the spot there. I wasn't planning...
No, no, that's okay.
I just kind of thought of it when she mentioned it.
What do you have? You've got tract one, and this is so small, I can't even read it.
Yeah, we would be splitting it into two 12-acre tracts.
Oh, okay.
So if someone picked it up, they would still be within those boundaries.
Two 12-acre tracts. Okay. 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 That's the only question I had about it, so. Okay, I don't see any further council questions. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers? There are none signed up. Is there any in the audience that would like to speak about this? No? Okay. The motion, or are there any final comments from council on this item? Seeing none. The motion on the floor is to approve the preliminary plat. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
My votes, preliminary plat passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Item number 39 is a consideration of adoption, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement of ordinance 0-2122-21. Upon second and final reading, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending the planned unit development established in ordinance 0-1415-45 to amend the allowable uses for Lot 4A in Block 1 of University North Park Professional Center. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Still moved.
Second.
Is there a representative of the applicant to make a presentation?
Good evening. Mark Zitzau with Johnson &amp; Associates. My address is 1 E. Sheridan Avenue in Oklahoma City, 73104. Before you tonight is an amendment to the University North Park PUD. We're seeking to permit a daycare called the Learning Center. The PUD specifically spelled out an allowance for this area for potential commercial uses subject to a traffic impact analysis. Our office prepared that, submitted it to staff with this amendment. It's, it's been reviewed, and with that, our understanding would be that this use could be permitted through this amendment process. So happy to answer any questions, but we would ask for your approval.
Okay. Are there any comments from council regarding this item? I see, none, none, okay. And just to clarify, this is a child daycare center in the northern part of the University North Park area, north of Embassy Suites and the Young Center, I guess you could say.
That's correct. It's an existing platted lot. We'll be using shared access that's already there, and we'll be meeting all of the other codes and landscaping ordinances that are in place.
Okay. Let's see. Okay, here we go. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers registered for this item? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak about this item? No? Okay. And any final comments from council regarding this item? No? I would just note that I think that probably a daycare center wasn't something that was originally envisioned, perhaps, in the UMP area, but we have seen a number of resident, people moving to that area in the Tera Apartments, and now we're going to have a senior independent living center there next door. So I think the need for this type of service in that area is apparent, so all for it. So thank you very much. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance upon second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
My votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Still moved.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
My votes have been cast, and the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Okay. Item 40 is consideration of adoption, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement of ordinance Upon second and final reading, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, to grant special use for a bar, lounge, or tavern in the C2 General Commercial District located at 2224 West Main Street, Suite 2262. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Still moved.
Second.
Is there a representative of the applicant to make a presentation? Come on down.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Garrett Haley and Dax Ryan. It's Blue House Development. Address 6502 Slide Road in Lubbock, Texas, 79424. We appreciate your time this evening. We appreciate the planning commission support of this case. This is for the Normandy Creek Shopping Center on 24th and Main, as you can see on the map, and we've been doing some exciting renovations to the property the last few months, and we have a sports built, sports grill and bar concept who is eager to go into the corner space of the property. And with the current zoning, it's our understanding that this requires a special use approval. So that is the reason for the application, and we appreciate city staff support, and would be happy to entertain any questions or, or further comments.
Okay. I was notified that there, I guess there's some slides that are loaded up if you want to show them.
I think, what was that, planning commission, maybe?
I don't know how to...
Just kind of the subject.
It's the shopping center where Hastings used to be, for many of you that remember Hastings. I know. I know. And this particular location, I think Luby's was there for a long time, and then there was another restaurant.
Furs.
Furs, furs. Furs and Luby's. They're both like cafe, buffet. What's that?
Local.
Yes, and local there, too, yeah. That's the two, the only two places I've ever known that were in there.
The pioneer restaurant that was part of the...
So everybody's familiar with the, where it's at and everything. Was that all the, I think that was all of them. Okay. Are there any comments, questions from council on this item? Seeing none. Okay. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Madam Clerk, are there any registered speakers? Okay. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this item? No? Okay. Are there any final comments from council? Counselor Schuler?
Yes. So this is located in Ward 2. I'm excited to see this be kind of the final piece of this kind of plaza area. And so I, I know that there's been substantial work done on the frontage and kind of revitalizing and making this kind of look updated. And so I'm excited to get kind of the, the final vacant spot, have a tenant, and so that can be complete and get more kind of people in there. And it seems like the, the tenant has kind of a thriving, other locations in Oklahoma City, so this should be really exciting, potentially on game day and, and things like that. So I'm excited to approve this tonight.
Thank you very much. We're, we're excited, too.
Okay. Seeing no further council member comments. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
My votes have been, the motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
All right. And I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
My votes have been, the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay. And I recognize Sean O'Leary, it says in the agenda, Director of Public Works, to make a presentation.
I missed it.
Please go, proceed.
Good evening, Council. My name is Todd Quillen, engineer for the city of Norman, and I'm here to talk to you about the floodplain ordinance revision. And the ordinance was, is part of the zoning ordinance. It's found in Section 22, 429.1 of the Norman Code of Ordinances, and it was first adopted in 1975 when Norman joined the NFIP program. And it has been revised 13 times since then, and this revision will allow FEMA to modify Norman's CRS rating from seven to six. And flood insurance policyholders in the special flood hazard area receiving a 15% discount would then receive a 20% discount on premiums. And I want to say that what the, kind of further explain the special flood hazard area, that you probably have heard it referred to as the 100-year floodplain or the 1% chance floodplain, but the latest terminology is just SFHA. And it's important to note that CRS, it's a voluntary program for NFIP communities. There are currently 12 CRS communities in Oklahoma. Of course, Norman is one of them. There's also Tulsa, Edmund, Lawton, Broken Arrow. The CRS rewards, program rewards communities for implementing activities such as higher ordinance standards, public outreach projects, and open space preservation. And CRS class ratings range from 10 to 1. And of course, the higher the flood protection activity, the lower the rating, and flood insurance premiums are discounted in the SFHA based on rating. Class 9 communities receive a 5% discount, with a Class 1 community receiving a 45% discount. And Norman is currently a Class 7 community, and flood insurance policyholders in the SFHA currently receive a 15% discount. And I just want to say that Tulsa, right now, they are a Class 1 community. They are receiving a 45% discount. And there's only two communities in the country that are Class 1. The other one is in California. Of course, this is the manual we use to implement the program here. It's a three-ring binder, about five inches thick. It's updated every five years. It has the guidelines, the creditable, creditable activities that we do in order to gain credit for the program and get points to determine our rating. This manual is updated approximately every three years. The last time it was updated was 2017. However, last year FEMA came out with an addendum to the manual instead of updating or giving a new coordinator's manual. And so there were some things in there that we can do with our ordinance in order to increase our class rating for Norman. And this chart here shows some of the creditable activities that we receive. And for example, we get points for doing outreach projects, stormwater. People do a lot of outreach projects every year. And when people call and want to know if their property's in the floodplain, we give them that information. We can provide GIS maps. We also have higher regulatory floodplain ordinance standards than the FEMA minimum, so we get credit for that. We also get some credit for channel maintenance. There are approximately 2,000 properties in Norman that are currently in the special flood hazard area. Of those, approximately 430 have flood insurance policies, and 126 of those are in the special flood hazard area, or 29% of the total policies. The average flood insurance premium is, in the SFHA, is $1,214 per year, and the average CRS discount for our current Class 7 rating is $214 per policy. And if you choose to adopt this revised floodplain ordinance, our CRS class rating will go from seven to six, resulting in an average CRS discount of $286 per policy. dollars per policy. And it's important to note that flood insurance policyholders outside the SFHA do not receive a CRS discount, since their policy is already discounted by being outside the SFHA. And I would like to point out in the staff report, it does say that properties outside, uh, the SFHA receive a ten percent discount, but that is no longer the case. Okay, uh, so what are we here to talk about? And that is, uh, freeboard, that is one thing that, uh, I need to explain. Of course, our maps, on all our floodplain maps, there's a base flood elevation, and that is the hundred-year, uh, elevation that the water would get to in the event of a, a, a bad storm. And FEMA requires that you must build at or above the base flood elevation. Well, in Norman right now, in our floodplain ordinance, we have what we call a freeboard requirement. All buildings must be elevated two feet above the base flood elevation, and because we do that, we get CRS credit for that. And part of revising the ordinance is to include the associated, uh, electrical and mechanical equipment as part of that two-foot freeboard requirement, such as outdoor air conditioners, generators, things of that nature. Okay, and again, if, uh, if you adopt this ordinance tonight, the CRS rating from Norman will go from seven to six, and again, uh, the policyholders in the SFHA currently receiving a fifteen percent discount will now receive twenty percent. And of course, this process started back in October, so it's been through several committees, and, uh, so here, this is the last stop before adoption, hopefully. Okay, so what language are we changing exactly? Okay, for residential structures, uh, including both site-built and manufactured homes, they shall be constructed on fill so that the lowest floor, including basement, ductwork, mechanical and electric equipment, including furnaces, water heaters, and air conditioners, is at least two feet above the base flood elevation. Now, I won't read the whole paragraph, but it also applies to manufactured homes, and it's also going to apply for non-residential construction. And these are some pictures of, uh, air conditioner units and generators that, uh, have already been done in Norman. This is a house on La Home Street that was elevated, uh, I want to say five, six years ago, and it's hard to see in this picture, but the air conditioning unit is on a platform, it's probably six feet in the air. And you can see this picture up here, that, this is prior to the house being elevated, and this picture here is after the house was elevated. Again, this is another house on La Home, this one was completely demolished and rebuilt. Again, the lowest floor of the house is two feet above the base flood elevation, and you can, again, see that the air conditioners are sitting up off the ground, probably four or five feet. So in reality, we've already been enforcing this requirement, and we're just now making sure it's in the ordinance, so we can get credit for it, for our CRS rating. And this is a generator, this is a, uh, probably one that was done within the last year, and again, you can see it's elevated above, two feet above the base flood elevation. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions or, uh, answer, if you have any comments.
So, uh, what was our rating, I guess, when we started? I don't know when that would have been, I guess, what was our lowest or highest rating, I guess?
Well, if you're not in the program, you're a class-ten, that means you don't get any discounts, so that's what we were prior to joining the program.
When's the last time that we went up, or went down, I guess? Or when we were eight, when, went down to...
Well, uh, back in, I believe, twenty-eleven, we were a class-five community.
Okay.
Uh, before that, we were a class-ten, but the requirements keep changing from the CRS side of things, and then they become stricter and harder to meet. So in twenty-fifteen, we came, became a class-six community, and then in twenty-twenty, we were, uh, audited again. We get, we get an audit every five years, and we just barely miss being a class-six community. So by doing these things to our ordinance, we will have enough points to become a class-six community again.
Okay. And I know it's a pretty detailed, long list, but maybe a summary. Uh, why is Tulsa have a number-one rating? Like, why are there only two cities? How is Tulsa one of only two cities in the country? Like, what do they do?
Well, it's very difficult to, to do, get enough creditable activities for that. They, they do flood warning system, you know, they have levees that they have to maintain, and they have very strict regulations about building in the floodplain. They also have a city of Tulsa floodplain that extends far beyond the FEMA floodplain.
They have their own floodplain?
Yeah, they've had, uh, significant loss of life there over the years, so they're very diligent about floodplain management.
Okay. Any, uh, Councilwoman Peacock?
Um, first commend the staff's work on getting us from a class-seven to class-six. Uh, are we pursuing any actionable items to get us from a class-six then to a class-five?
Well, not at this time, but there are always things that we can do if there's enough staff and funding, that's always the, the issue.
Sure.
Uh, there's certain, there's very specific requirements, let's say, as far as like channel maintenance, and record-keeping, and inspection of detention ponds, and things of that nature. And to be quite honest, the Stormwater Division doesn't have enough staff right now to get credit for that kind of stuff.
Sure, sure. Well, I appreciate you, uh, contending to turn over every rock and looking for those opportunities.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Schuler?
Yeah, I just, um, thanks for, thanks to staff for, um, doing this, uh, work to, again, bring us from, um, you know, a seven to a six. Um, I just have some clarifying questions for my knowledge and for the public. Um, the, um, changes that we're making, do, so anybody that's in the floodplain that, you know, gets this notice, has the opportunity to purchase this, um, would they have to implement these changes to be, to get the twenty percent discount?
Well, the, if they're in a special flood hazard area and they get a flood insurance policy, this twenty percent discount will be applied by their insurance agent when they get the policy renewed or a, a brand-new one.
Okay, so that's across all of our...
Yes, that's across the whole spec, special flood hazard area in Norman.
Great. Um, and then my other question is, so our ordinance, um, and what we're updating tonight is, um, like, future building, so, and, like, how, how, how are we, um, I guess, maintaining compliance with this? So it's, uh, new build, we'll obviously have to comply with the ordinance and building above two feet, and, you know, elevating the different, um, you know, mechanisms of air conditioning and ductwork and all that thing, but what about, um, homes that are not, that have already been built in the floodplain? Do they need to be brought up to compliance, or are they kind of grandfathered in?
They're grandfathered in unless they do what we call substantial improvement, and let's say they want to add an addition to their house. Well, if, if they're, but, the value of the remodel is more than fifty percent the value of the structure, then they have to bring it into current compliance with the floodplain ordinance, which means they'd have to elevate two feet above the BFE and also elevate the air conditioning and associated equipment.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Okay, any other comments from council? Okay. The motion, let's see, this is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers registered for this item? No? Any, anybody in the audience that would like to speak about this item? Okay. The motion, or any final comments from council on this item? Okay. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
All right, the, let's see. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
To the last item, which is miscellaneous... ...opportunity for citizens to address city council. Due to Open Meetings Act regulations, council is not able to participate in discussion of miscellaneous comments. Remarks should be directed to the council as a whole and limited to three minutes or less. Uh, Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers registered tonight?
We do have one speaker, Daniel Munson.
All right. Right down the middle, yeah.
Filling in tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, Dan Munson, Ward Six. So I want to talk about, um, utilizing our resources in the city, so the, um, some of you might know I work for a manufacturing company, and we ma, we manufacture technology stuff, and, um, we buy a lot of companies, and when we buy companies, we, we try to optimize, um, the best that we can, so sometimes we move product lines from one factory to another, we try to, uh, optimize the amount of square footage inside of the factory just so that we can be really efficient. And so one of the things I was thinking about, um, is an opportunity just for us to consider, and that is our golf course. So our golf course is a par seventy, which means that we'll never host a major golf tournament, 'cause you have to have a, a par seventy-two to host a, a major golf tournament, and, uh, we're not generating a lot of revenue from our golf course. Um, it's, uh, my understanding that since two thousand and ten, we've only allocated thirty-two hundred dollars of capital, uh, and when I'm talking about that, I'm talking about for projects at our golf course. And so what that tells me is that we're not really that invested in our golf course, and you're like, oh, no, 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 we did a major renovation back in two thousand and three, we reopened it. I understand that. But what I'm saying is that property is in really close proximity to I-35. That's valuable land, and what I want you to consider is what would happen if we took half of that golf course, so turned it into a nine-hole golf course, and on the north side of the golf course, we made an industrial park or a research park? Could you imagine the amount of jobs that we could create with that? Could you imagine the amount of revenue we could get for selling that land? With that revenue, we could potentially build a world-class golf course, where, that people from other cities and other states would want to come to. We could maybe host, uh, tournaments, um, that would generate, uh, hotel and sales tax revenue. And so I, I would ask, and we've got a ton of land, a hundred and eighty-nine square miles. Uh, a, a golf course could easily go out in Ward Five, and we'd have a much higher slope rating in, in Ward Five than we'd have at our current, uh, facility. So, uh, I'm asking just for the staff, for the council, to consider that, uh, in optimizing our resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Munson. Anybody else in the audience? This meeting is adjourned then.